This is mad. You know, if you figure out when Fred gave that analysis the other day about getting money, the fund balance had to be eighty million dollars. If he has ever done anything twenty-five percent, I'll just do it that way. Okidoki, ah, the choki. Fixing to roll over, guys. Getting ready for the dog and pony show. Here we go. Well, the Carl Public Hearing Meeting, Henry County Board of Commissions, nine AM, Wednesday, July the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. Purpose of this meeting is to first conduct a public hearing for the two thousand and fifteen millage rate for the county. Second thing is consideration to adoption of the two thousand and fifteen millage rate. We have an agenda that's published. If somebody move, we accept the agenda as published.
So moved.
Have a motion, District Three? Second, District One? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So moved. Madam Manager, you're going to present this?
Sure.
Thank you so much. I'll call this the presentation team with Task Commissioner David Curry as well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's our third final public hearing on the millage rate discussion. We've had a PowerPoint last two meetings. I think we're going to bypass the PowerPoint. Don't want to bore you with that information. You've seen it twice already. I believe County Manager Sherri Matthews has a couple of resolutions to present for your consideration. And again, if you have any questions, if any new evidence come out, any questions you've had over the last week, we'll try to answer those at this time.
Very good. Thank you again, David, and good morning, Chair and Board members. As David has indicated, we've done the PowerPoint presentation at two previous meetings and certainly have it available if you all want to refer back to it, but really wanted to open it up for public comments at this time and to answer any questions that you all may have. Just to recap, as you all are aware, we did adopt a budget of one hundred and thirty-four point six million dollars, and there is a resolution in place that caps our budget not to go below the twenty-five percent in terms of the unassigned fund balance. As you all are aware, we did have a shortfall in that budget, and it was as a result of a number of items. As you all are aware, the opening of our health clinic, increases to employees' salaries. We had some needed expenditures at our senior center, the jail operations, and a host of other items that I'll be more than happy to recap with you all should you have any questions. But you do have before you two resolutions this morning. One resolution is for a hundred percent rollback, which would be at thirteen point two-three-four, and then the second resolution is that a rollback of thirteen point eight-seven-three. Before you open it up for public comments, I have asked Fred, our Finance Director, to come up and briefly give you all some examples on the what-ifs, if you have a home that's valued at a certain amount, and what the impacts would be. So if you all are amenable, I would like to ask Fred to come forward, present that information, and then myself and David will be available to answer any questions that you all may have.
Before we get started, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You made reference that the budget has a shortfall.
Yes, sir.
Well, as we well know, we had two budgets this year. The only reason we had two budgets, first one was the manager, prior to the change in the former government in Henry County, the manager was in charge of drafting the budget. So he had already been well on his way in drafting a budget. So when legislation changed and it kind of modified that, they made the chairman working in concert, so the chairman, which was me, generated another budget, and the only significant difference was between a two percent employee raise and a three percent. But you just indicated that the current budget, which was classified as the chairman's budget, has a shortfall. Did the manager's budget not have a shortfall as well?
Both budgets had a shortfall.
Thank you. Fred, I recognize you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. As Sherri said, she asked me to put this together, so I'm going to just walk through it. It's a sort of a layover-type presentation. It'd be the same schedule, but added, something added each time to it. If I can start out with, if somebody had a house home worth one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the two thousand and fourteen Tax Digest, their tax bill, they get a forty percent, which means the value they would have been taxed at was forty-eight thousand. Their exemption of fifteen thousand, meaning it would have been thirty-three thousand taxed on. Last year, our millage rate was fourteen point two-nine-eight, right here. So last year's tax bill would have been sixteen hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Read that, okay? The county's portion of the total sixteen, one point six, one thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars, and this has been discussed many times, I just want to bring it back up, four hundred and seventy-one dollars of the sixteen hundred dollars that the taxpayer paid were only twenty-nine percent of the total bill, and Tax Commissioner has mentioned this as well as where the dollars go and so on, only twenty-nine percent of it goes to the county. So at this point, this is last year's based on fourteen two-nine-eight. Basically, what I'll be doing here, just to layer this in, so there's not too many numbers to start right off the bat, this first set of numbers here are identical, these here, and you can see the sixteen twenty-six thirty-eight. What I've said here is if the house, home did not have any increase in value in this year's Tax Digest, the citizen's home just still one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and you rolled it back to thirteen point eight-seven-three from last year's fourteen two-nine-eight, their tax bill would reduce this one million, one thousand, one, sixteen hundred and twelve dollars. And basically, what that means is the only decrease is going to come from the county because the schools' bond and their M and O and the water and the state would go down, this one should have went down a couple dollars because this is point oh five. But bottom line is that the total reduction, as a result of you reducing it to only thirteen point eight-seven versus a hundred percent rollback, would still give the citizen whose house did not go up in value, a fourteen dollar decrease. The point here being that we, with our reduction and nobody else reducing, the only way they're going to get a tax reduction is from the county. Again, laying over the same, here is the same as what you just saw. Here's what I've done, is I've taken the one hundred and twenty thousand dollar house and said, what if it went up to one hundred and twenty-three thousand? Same calculation using the thirteen point eight-seven-three, their total tax bill would be sixteen fifty-seven or thirty-one dollars more. Of the thirty-one dollars more, the county would only represent two dollars and sixty-two cent increase with the rollback from last year's fourteen two-nine-eight to thirteen eight-seven-three. So basically, what you see at the bottom here is for a three thousand dollar increase in value, the homeowner's home has increased in value by three thousand, taxes would have increased by seventeen dollars if you had not rolled anything back. But since you are, would roll back, if you would roll back to the thirteen eight-seven-three or point four-two-five mills, there would be a credit of fourteen dollars. The net result is the two dollars and sixty-two cent increase that you saw, where last year they paid four seventy-one, this year they'll pay four seventy-four. So even with the rollback and an increase in a home value, it not being a hundred percent but being the point four-two-five millage, their tax bill from the county only increased by two dollars and sixty-two cents. Overall, it increases thirty-one because the school, the water, both have an increase. They have no increase in millage, but the house going up without a decrease in millage causes them to pay more taxes. Same scheduled, but last column added, I've said, what if the house went up by ten thousand instead of three thousand? Under this scenario, their taxes would go up to seventeen hundred and sixty-eight dollars, of which the county's portion at the thirteen eight-seven rollback would be forty-one dollar increase. Their total increase would be one hundred and forty-one dollars, of which the county only represents forty-one of it, or twenty-nine percent of that increase, and you can see the schools represent almost sixty-seven percent. So again, for a house, a home that went from one twenty to one thirty in value, you can see that the total, because of the increase in the value and with the rollback to thirteen eight-seven-three, would cause the homeowner to pay another hundred and forty bucks. But again, of the hundred and forty dollars, only forty of it, forty-one of it, is what the county's going to get. The rest of it goes to the schools and the water. And finally, same scenario, one last column, this is the last one, I've said, what if the home is ten thousand dollar increase and you rolled it all the way back to thirteen two-three-four instead of the thirteen eight-seven-three? Under this scenario, the county taxes would be four eighty-nine, whereas under the thirteen eight-seven-three, it was five thirteen, so there would be a further reduction of twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents to this figure here. Overall, there would still be a seventeen dollar increase, and overall, there would be a hundred and eighteen dollar increase, of which only fifteen percent of that is represented by the county. Again, because this ten thousand dollar increase in value is still going to be taxed at more dollars to them because of the, at eighty and so on and so forth, because the schools and the water do not do a rollback. So there's the differences, as you can see, in a hundred and twenty, as to why a hundred and twenty thousand dollar house. Our residential homes have gone down from where we were peaked at two thousand and eight. Our average residential home was a hundred and eighty-one thousand. It's gone back up slightly each year, and we're now back to one forty-one. We were down, I think, to a hundred and five. So the bottom line is, the one twenty was, I felt, a home that is in the sort of sweet spot of where, sort of an average of where taxpayers' home values are. But that's, that gives you a looksee at what each homeowner can be looking forward to. And as I said, if their home did not go up, they would, and you did roll back to the thirteen eight-seven-three, which is not a hundred percent, they would still see a reduction in their taxes. And again, keep in mind, even though the digest has gone up, not every homeowner's home value has gone up. It's an average, because some have probably gone up greater than to ten percent, the digest went up, and some have not gone up at all. I doubt any have gone less, has gone down rather in value. But the bottom line is that to have a digest with a ten percent increase, some homes are above ten percent, some homes are below ten percent.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
The way the state law reads, last year was fourteen point two-nine-eight, I think that's what I read. I tried to scroll this back, but I can't scroll it on my scope here, where I can see that. Okay? That amount generated X number of tax dollars. Okay? The thirteen point two-three-four millage this year would generate the same amount of money that fourteen point two-nine-eight did last year. So if you look at the total picture, if you just take one house and dissect it, that's not the whole picture, because the deal is, there's got to be some significant increase for thirteen point two-three-four to generate the same amount of tax money on the assessment that fourteen point two-nine-eight did last year. And this is the same old, same old, the law mandates, this is why we have this here, and the law mandates, if you do anything other than go in a hundred percent, you have to advertise it as a tax increase. So I just wanted to state that. Thank you. Yes, sir, District Two?
I want to make sure we have a point of clarification, because we keep talking about this rollback. As you've even said yourself, you asked for originally a five percent pay increase, and now it's come down to three percent. We have fire stations coming online in next year. Under the millage calculation, if you do, go back to a hundred percent rollback every year, how do you fund the two fire stations that will be coming online over the two years, the senior center, as well as the three to five percent? So how do you?
Your fund balance.
So you get into the rainy day funds?
Yes, that's what it's there for.
But, and that is, that used to be an option, but Chairman, you actually requested a resolution, and the resolution was brought forward to put a fence around our fund balance, so we didn't go below twenty-five percent. That was your resolution. So I'm trying to figure out how we, I mean, how will we reconcile that difference?
Let me, let me share that. I did initiate and ask Fred to draft a ordinance for the fund balance. Reason being, that one weekend, we fussed about it, and we talked about it, and there for a whole weekend, okay? Fund balance has been an issue, okay? Now, the fund balance is twenty-five percent.
Right.
Okay, now, when Fred came up at the meeting the other night and gave us this worst-case scenario, he borrowed this amount, this amount, we started out at forty-six million, and by the time he got through, we had fourteen million. Okay, if that's the case, if you're going to maintain, we still had fourteen, fifteen million dollars left, which is significant to me, but if you're going to have, maintain at twenty-five percent, you've got to start out and have a fund balance of about eighty million dollars.
But I think with the confusion, because I had somebody ask me about this last night, is that, Roz, when we talk about the money market rates and other things, there's unencumbered balance, fund balance, and then there's, and this is getting into the accounting terminology, but there's, it's no different than when you go and you have to put deposit on items, there's projects that have already been approved, and that means they're encumbered, but the cash is still sitting in the bank, but you, it's no longer really available to you because it's been encumbered for a project. So to just look at the big number, it's no different than, I can tell you the math when I was a child, was I wanted a go-kart. I found out my dad made thirty-five thousand dollars a year, and I knew a go-kart costs five hundred dollars a year. I told him, you know, I was like, well, why can't I, you can afford seventy go-karts. I mean, that's looking at it very simplified, not understanding that encumbered means there's already things that are taking it. As a child, I didn't recognize, we had mortgages, we had utilities, we had things that had to be paid for, so that thirty-five thousand dollars my father was making actually was probably meaning we were living paycheck to paycheck at the time. But as a child, I didn't understand that, and that's the thing that, I tell you, be careful looking at the big balance without understanding the accounting terminology and what's encumbered and what's not encumbered. Am I, am I correct on that, Fred? Is that the twenty-five percent actually goes down at points in August and September, down to fifteen percent, but there is some flexibility in the way the resolution was written?
The Tuesday night meeting, when I presented to take excess funds into money market to get a better interest rate at a different bank, those figures that I used were the, quote, "the excess funds that I could draw that weren't needed immediately to pay," and we have a working capital cash account we maintain money in. And that money of excess is what I used the next day to show a starting point, if you would, and dwindled it based on withdrawals and withdrawals and so on. And at the end of that report, it showed we were down to fourteen million dollars, I believe. It's a forecast. It doesn't mean it's, I don't know what's going to happen in July, August, September. It just says, this is what I believe, based on what we did in the last couple of months with no collections of taxes, because they're all in the cash balance already, much to your previous analysis. So yes, we got down to that. That figure was ten percent of the hundred, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-four million dollar budget. So that's the relationship of what those numbers are and how it works down, yes, month by month by month.
So I guess I'll bring it back to, my question is, because I want to do a hundred percent rollback too, but we've heard the county manager, she let us know that she didn't consider it an option without us laying off employees. How do we reconcile your request for a three to five percent employee pay raise and still fund the fire stations? I mean, how do we do it?
Fund balance.
But we've just heard, we can't do it with fund balance.
Yeah, but he said it's all, it's only a forecast. I'm forecasting brighter days. He's forecasting the worst-case scenario. It's a forecast, that's what he said.
The sheer fact, I guess we ought to get through the public section, the public comment section, but it's just, I don't know, maybe it's the fundamental decision to try to use rainy day funds when we actually have a growing Tax Digest, just really, it freaks me out a little bit, because that's, that's the part of fiscal responsibility that, I mean, I always tell my clients, I do, I practice at my own personal household, when you're making money, you know, you try to invest for the future, you try to save and to say we would go spend more than we could and get in the rainy day fund, because this was, I mean, you can say the legislation changed, Chairman, but you've been creating the budgets for the last three years, since you came on board. You've been involved with the design of the budgets every year, and you voted, I don't think there's a budget you have not voted for.
I have voted for the budget.
You voted for every budget we've had so far.
But it's fund balance. I'm, I'm, I'm still saying we can fund it.
So the sheer fact that you voted for all three budgets that you've been involved with, you don't think that there's a lot of waste in them, because they're involved with your, but you created them, so you can't say that they're wasteful budgets? If we use all the fund balance this year?
Say again?
How do we balance next year's budget if we use all the fund balance this year?
How do we balance it?
Yeah. How do we fund it?
We run it, we run the fund balance.
Let's make this real simple. Everybody knows this, the hang-up is the law. You know that's the law, okay? And I campaigned, campaigns to me, when you make a statement, it becomes significant. And I'm not a George Bush reading my lips, knowing you taxes. I campaigned on the premise that I would never vote for property tax increase, not for increased fees or not for that, and I'm not going to start now. But the budget is balanced, it's budgeted, and we can make do. Now, the purpose of this hearing is, the law says it's an increase, it's a property tax increase. Now, what I suggested, if I can, if this group can legislate a change of government in Henry County at the stroke of a pen, surely they can take and get the General Assembly to change that law and not make it a change and not make it a increase in tax. And then you can say, we lowered the millage.
So Chairman, do you agree that it's just a semantics thing? That it's not really a tax increase, is it? It's just a semantics that Governor Roy Barnes in nineteen ninety-nine created, and you don't, you don't personally believe it's truly a tax increase either, do you?
I could promote a millage, a decrease, but this is a tax increase. By law, it's a tax increase.
I've got the terminology.
But I'm not, I'm not going to be haunted with that, so that's a, I have, you can quiz me all you want to, my position hasn't changed, and...
Here's the research that I was able to do. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, the Georgia law, known as the Taxpayer's Bill of Right, was passed. It was under Governor Roy Barnes, this was his request, and his, his, the reason, his, the reason he did this, it was really a theory of his that has now been disproven. He said, he signed the law and said it was designed to ensure citizens knew local governments would be receiving more tax revenue if Tax Digest increased and tax rates stay the same. They were keeping the rates, this is from, a quote from Governor Barnes, "They were keeping the rates the same," and Commissioners all over the state were saying, "Well, we didn't increase taxes." Well, yes, you did, you increased the value. So he's, Governor Roy Barnes is putting forth that, back then, that we somehow mandated what the values were for the properties. We've now since found out, that theory's incorrect. Go look at two thousand and nine, ten, eleven, the tax values plummeted. If I had any control, do you think anybody up here would have made the tax values plummet? It shows, and Roy Barnes was not being completely honest when he did this, because he knows that tax assessors are completely independent of the Commissioners. We're not, we are not the people who have the ability to go and tell the tax assessor what we want. It's created as an independent body, and it just shows that it's a, it's a premise that's false, because as you heard from our Finance Director, average value of a house pre the collapse of the finance, of the real estate market was a hundred and eighty-one thousand, went down to a hundred and five thousand, now we're back to a hundred and forty-one. That hardly sounds like a Tax Digest that we are manipulating or controlling the value of. So I hold that it's a false premise, and if you're, if you're, it's a political trap, is what it is, and I think Governor Barnes knew that when he created it.
Anybody else have any comments? I'm going to have public comments, if nobody else have any questions.
I'll hold my comments there.
Okay. Y'all have anything else? Anybody got any questions? Okay, what I'm going to do, I'm going to open the floor up for public comments, and if you would, come to the podium, state your name, and I will give you three minutes to make comments about the proposed budget. I'll repeat that this is a public hearing for the purpose of making comments for the two thousand and fifteen millage rate. Saying it the second time, having none, I declare that the public hearing has expired, and I yield the floor to District Four.
Thank you, Chairman. I've said this the entire time when we were going through the budget cycle and when we were trying to set this millage. The only way not to raise taxes is not to raise the budget. There is no other way. If, you know, I went through and I actually projected what would happen if we just took the fence off, fund balance, rainy day fund, and we just said, we can use it all. What I came up with, in three years, we empty out fund balance. We have no savings whatsoever, and in four years, we have an eighteen million dollar shortfall. You cannot budget using savings. It would be very similar of you buying a home that you can't afford and you using savings to pay for it, but you only have enough savings for three years. It works okay if somebody's sitting here and they're not going to be here in three years when everything ends, but at some point, we've got to pay for it. And again, the only way not to raise taxes is to not raise the budget. And this year, we raised the budget. But the thing that I got from Fred, it doesn't matter what we do with the millage, if their property values went up, their taxes are going up because of the school board and et cetera. You know, the next thing, the splotch, splotch passed by the majority of voters in this county. I have constituents who have homeowner's insurance that has tripled in the last few years. These are good, hardworking Americans. These are people on fixed budgets. These are people just getting by, who are paying three times what they were. I ran into a gentleman in the hall last week, and he told me, he said, "Commissioner, I want my money back. I want a refund, because I'm paying for fire stations for other people in this county, and I'm not getting the use out of them." And I mean, you know, is it fair? No. So we've got an entire community in Kellytown who are paying so much more in homeowners in comparison to what they were paying, and to tell them, hey, listen, we don't want to fund your fire station, although you're funding our fire station, is not right. These are our neighbors. They, they've paid for fire stations for years, and then now, they're not getting the use out of them. And to them, their property's going up, they're, you know, if they have to pay fifteen dollars more in taxes to lower their homeowner's insurance, twenty-five hundred dollars, it's a net win for them. And then, you know, we've got other things that came up, our health benefits, we all know the new healthcare stuff, it's more expensive now. I mean, it, there is no free lunch, and it comes out here. And I don't know how to move this forward and say that we're just going to use savings. Again, in three years, we would have to be shutting the county down, I mean, furloughing, I guess, about a month, and then four years, we, eighteen million dollars in the hole. What I'm saying is, every year, for the next few years, the budget is going up. We've got splotch, insurance, it's going up. We don't have an option with it. And if we keep digging into savings, it won't be long till we don't have any left. And the other point on that, any board, prior to this board, could use that savings. Any board. They were kind enough to leave it in there and leave it for us, and I made a decision when I was elected to leave this seat better than I found it. And I can't leave this seat with no money in funds, in fund balance, and the county having to shut down for a month at the end of the year, end of our fiscal year, just to save face. I won't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment? Yes, sir. I yield the floor to District One.
I'd just like to say that, you know, this board up here, we have done nothing, we have approved nothing to increase property base. We're only controlled by the millage rate, and we've rolled the millage rate back since two thousand and thirteen. So I feel that we're doing a very good job, and we're moving this county forward.
Anybody else? Yes, sir, District Two?
Just wanted to draw attention to the fact that, just going over the tenure, the, because this is, I guess this would be my fourth...
because this is, I guess this would be my fourth budget that we, that we've worked through. 2012 was an uncomfortable year, because we had to, the, the millage was increased significantly. I had trouble with the way it was, was done, so I voted against the budget, and then I voted against the millage funding. So it was a two-part process. Everybody up here on this board has voted for this budget. You've even heard the chairman say that he doesn't think that there's a waste in this budget, since he helped craft it. It's got a 3 percent pay raise for the employees, he had asked for a 5 percent. It's got fire stations coming into the county, it's got a senior center in District 2, and I, I know that the chairman's very happy about that too, because he's also, you know, was the mayor of Hampton for many years. And so, I say that there's no way that this budget that was approved by 6-0 can be funded, even with fund balance, now that we put a fence around fund balance. So, the vote that you'll see today is whether or not we govern. I, I thought about it, going back to Governor Roy Barnes, is how sad is it, if you fall into this political trap, is that when Tax Digest goes up, as you've heard, we have no control over that, because it went down and now it's coming back up. Fortunately, that's not us, that's the market economy. God bless the market economy that the Tax Digest is growing again. That's, in its simplest form, wealth creation. Nobody cheers against wealth creation. As your property goes up, that means when you sell at a later date, you get to keep that extra value or equity that's increased. I think it's sad that this, this, the language that was voted on in 1999, under political terms, is voting against the very thing that helps people raise wealth and their standard of living. So it's just frustrating, it's kind of reminds me of that Saturday Night Live skit with Debbie Downer, where every time she walked in the room, you know, she got, you know, she always talked, looked at the bad thing, or looking at, or having that outlook of a, of a glass half-empty instead of a glass half-full. Be happy that we're in a growing Tax Digest, it could be a lot worse, and we're doing everything in our power. We have dropped the millage every year for the last, well, for the last two years. This will be, once again, we will be dropping the millage, so we're returning over $2 million back to the taxpayers, because it is their money, and that's gonna be our promise and commitment to you. We will continue to return money back to the taxpayers, because I think it's the right thing to do, but I'm not gonna fall into the political trap where we're going to not pay for fire stations and not pay for the things that were voted under, under SLOSH by the citizens.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? If not, you got choices, two resolutions in front of you, if somebody would move in Okay. Having no response in the comments, somebody move, we adjourn.
I think we have to set this today, don't we, David?
Well, I think somebody needs to make something, otherwise I'll adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could, while you all were contemplating, I certainly want to comment on some of the comments that I've heard from you all. We've talked about the budget this year and the previous years, and I want to play something on, on the overhead for you all.
Chairman, I want to move that we move forward with the rollback to 13.873. That we move forward with the rollback to 13.873.
We have a resolution, a motion for a resolution, Henry County Board of Commissioners, levying the assessment of edwalo on taxes fiscal year 2015, to roll it back, the county's portion to 13.873 mill. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second for, any further discussions? No one come in, I got counsel, I know you reviewed this, does this meet the state requirements that wants to approve this, it carries my signature, and this will meet the state requirements?
Yes, sir, it's my opinion it does.
Got you, thank you. Okay, any further questions? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign? Thank you so much. Now somebody move, we adjourn. Have a motion, District 5?
Second.
Second, District 1, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you so much.